United States, America, to the Republic, understand our nation, our God, indivisible, and the breathing justice of all.
In compliance with NJSA 10 column four, the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regularly, of this special meeting of the Jackson Planning Board has been advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger in accordance with the law. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bresi, Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Herring, Mr. Riker, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Marzo, Mr. Heller, Mr. Wall, Dr. Campbell, Mr. Herman.
Here, thank you. Now, I don't see a copy of the vouchers. I'm assuming Mr. Oz is not here, so there is no voucher for tonight. Thank you.
She's not here, so we don't need to do that.
Thank you. Bob, right over there in the corner. Any matters for discussion? Mr. Engineer, Mr. Planner?
No, sir.
One issue, Mr. Chairman, some engineering conscience clearing. Last week, first time in my career, anything like that ever happened. It was embarrassing, unprofessional. It will never happen again, and I apologize.
Thank you. Mr. Peters said no. Any, any legal matters for tonight?
None. We took care of that last time.
Okay, thank you very much. The, the minutes from October 2nd, 2023, I believe we'll hold off for the next meeting on those. Mr. Oz is not here, so.
You can do it, or you can wait, whatever you want to do.
I just want to, I think, I just want to confirm that it was final. I know that she was making some changes last minute.
Okay, then we can wait.
Mr. Shea, if the minutes were final from the October 2nd meeting?
I believe that I got them. I don't know if we're final yet.
Okay, so let's hold off till the next meeting. Thank you. So, for tonight, our first application, block 301, lot five, Down-to-Earth Farms LLC. Mr. L. Ferri, thank you. Mr. Cle, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. An applicant for, our application for preliminary and final major site plan approval associated with an 18,000-square-foot contractor's warehouse building and an 18,000-square-foot office building with a full basement. The project is compliant with all zoning requirements, except for minimum lot width, 300 feet is required, and 172 feet exists. The application is, does impact some wetlands, so the application provides testimony regarding the status of the permit to delineate those wetlands and fill those wetlands, but the Environmental Commission has indicated no concerns as of 6/21. Of course, some testimony from the applicant about proposed site utilization and proposed operations. We misidentified the Right-to-Beau Road as a county roadway. Actually, we missed it. It's actually, it's a township right-of-way, so all the improvements to Right-to-Beau will be subject to township standards and review, so I just wanted to make a clarification for that. There are curbing indicated on the property to, to the, to the west with curbing, and the applicant, I had a conversation with the applicant's engineer, and we're going to get curbing across the whole entire frontage of the property, and the applicant's going to request to pay into the pedestrian safety fund with respect to the sidewalk installation. The only other issue is more of a technical item. The stormwater rules have changed again, and the, there's a question of whether the application would be covered under the old rules or the new rules, and I'll work that through with the attorneys and the applicant. The application was submitted prior to the enactment of the rules, but there's a quirk in the, or the regulations that if they have to go for a land use permit with DEP, they have to pay, play by the new rules. That's more of a technical issue that I'll work out with the, with the applicant. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our office has a report dated October 4th of this year. Projects located in the LM Commercial Office Light Industrial Zone District, which permits warehousing or storage of goods and products as a permitted use, offices for administrative business, education, or executive services, and warehousing and contractors' office spaces subject to certain parameters. We'd ask the applicant to provide some detailed description of what's being proposed on the site. We'd ask for discussion of the surrounding uses and whether or not this site is connected to the site to the west, and whether or not any mergers going to occur between the two lots. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary, Giacobi Alfieri, and Jacobs on behalf of the applicant. Without spending any more time, you heard your professionals. We've reviewed their reports, prepared to address all their comments. Our first witness is Ryan McDermott from Dynamic Engineering, and he, we're seeking to have him qualified as a licensed engineer. Ryan, would you come up? You could use that mic, Ryan.
What's that? Just got to swear you in, sorry. Please raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you present will be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please say your name, spell your last, and your credentials, please.
Sure. My name is Ryan McDermott. That's M-C-D-E-R-M-O-T-T. Licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, licenses in good standing. I graduated from Rutgers University with a Bachelor's of Science in Engineering. I'm currently a principal at Dynamic Engineering. I've been with the firm almost eight years now. Over the course of that time, I've managed and designed dozens of industrial, commercial, and residential projects.
Thank you. We accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Okay, Ryan, and you've, we haven't pre-marked the exhibits, so as we go through, we're going to have to mark them. And would you first orient the board as to where this property is located and what the surrounding uses are?
Absolutely. So, the parcel is, this exhibit was not previously brought in, so this is an aerial map exhibit prepared by my firm with today's date. For general orientation purposes, the north arrow matches the Civil Plan Set, and it points towards the bottom of the page. The parcel is outlined in yellow there on the interior portion.
Wait, wait, wait. So, A1?
A1.
Thank you. Sorry, go ahead, Ryan.
A1. So, the property is outlined in yellow, and then you have the 200-foot radius around that with the yellow dashed line, with zone boundaries shown in a light blue color there. So, the parcel is known as block 301, lot five. It's located immediately adjacent to the applicant's current headquarters and facility on lot four, which is to the west. So, again, on this plan view, that's over to the right side of the page. Property is zoned LM Commercial Office Light Industrial Zone. It's 4.3 acres in size, whereas a minimum lot size of three acres is required, so we do comply. The property, as you can see from this aerial, is long and narrow in shape. It's over 1,000 feet in depth and only 172 feet in width, so again, that is an existing nonconformity, whereas 300 feet of width is required. Under existing conditions, the property is undeveloped, consisting largely of wooded area. It also does have isolated intermediate-value wetlands located at the rear portion of the site. The applicant did receive a wetlands letter of interpretation or an LOI from the DEP in May of this year. To the north of the property is Right-to-Beau Road with residential uses beyond in the R3 zone. To the east is the Aspen Tree Company with wooded area and industrial uses beyond that. To the south, the Aspen Tree Company property actually wraps around to the rear of the site, and then beyond that is I-195. And then to the west is the Down-to-Earth Landscaping Headquarters with wooded area beyond that. Now, if we don't mind flipping to the other exhibit, thank you. So, this will be A2.
And would you identify the exhibit for the record?
Yes. This is an overall site plan rendering prepared by my firm with today's date, and essentially, this is a colorized version of the overall site plan within the Civil Set with some color added to enhance visual effect. We're here tonight seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval for a proposed office building as well as a flex warehouse building. The office building is situated on the northeasterly portion of the parcel. Again, for general orientation purposes, north arrow points towards the bottom of the page. The office building has a 6,000-square-foot footprint. It's two stories with a basement beneath for a total gross floor area of 18,000 square feet. The height of the building is just over 32 feet from finished floor elevation to ridge line, whereas up to 45 feet is permitted in the zone. The flex warehouse building is located at the rear towards the south end of the lot, has a footprint of 18,000 square feet, which will be evenly divided amongst six future tenants, each with 3,000 square feet of leasable space. And the height on this building from finished floor elevation to the ridge line is 35 feet.
And on that flex building, there's a proportion of it that's flex space, if you will, warehouse and the rest is office?
That's correct.
Does that break down?
So, each one of those 3,000-square-foot leasable spaces, I think the architect can confirm, but it's only a few hundred square feet of office space within each one.
Okay. I'm sorry, continue, please.
Sure. Moving on to access and circulation. Access to the site is provided via one full movement driveway along Right-to-Beau Road, which is roughly centered along the property frontage at the bottom of the screen here. Because of how thin the lot is, the main driveway serves as a drive aisle for perpendicular parking spaces, and we understand waiver relief is required as the ordinance discourages having main driveways also function as parking drive aisles. However, not only is the lot width an existing nonconformity, which would make this very difficult to adhere to, but also, the first parking space on site is over 100 feet from the front property line, meaning that conflicting turning maneuvers that that ordinance section likely was intended to restrict, that function is essentially mitigated with the one, over 100-foot setback to the first parking space. Parking for the office building is provided to the west and south of the building with a 24-foot-wide drive aisle, and then for the flex building, there's a 65-foot-wide striped loading area adjacent to the building, which also features six overhead drive-in doors, one for each tenant. We have a 10-foot-wide grass paver emergency access lane behind the buildings, which provides full access for the fire department, and we do have a letter from the Fire Prevention Bureau. Comments therein were primarily related to striping and signage, and the applicant is happy to comply with all of those. Moving over to parking, there are 68 parking spaces adjacent to the office building, five of which will be make-ready electric vehicle charging spaces. There are nine parking spaces adjacent to the flex warehouse building, three are on the north side, and then one is adjacent to each tenant's space. And the planning review letter cited a total of 125 parking spaces required, whereas we had originally calculated a requirement of 82 spaces and thus have 82 spaces proposed. The difference primarily comes from the calculation method and breaking out the office area component of the flex building. Therefore, we are in front of the board tonight asking for variance relief, but as you will hear from our traffic engineer, our architect, and ultimately, our planner, we do believe this is justifiable. For example, even under the full build-out scenario for the office building, it's going to have up to 24 office desks, so if for whatever reason that should double in the future, which we don't anticipate it at all, there's still more than double the amount of parking around the building. For loading requirements, the ordinance requires three 12-foot-wide by 35-foot-long loading spaces for the overall development, and because that pavement area adjacent to the southerly flex warehouse building will be striped, there's technically about 10 loading spaces provided in the area, so we do satisfy that ordinance requirement, and we would anticipate that the largest vehicle operating on site for delivery purposes or to access the flex building would be an SU-30, which is like your typical box truck. Sufficient circulation is provided and is shown on sheet 21 of the Civil Drawings for that SU-30 box truck. Moving on to refuse and recycling, we have two 10-by-10 trash enclosures located west of the flex warehouse building. Trash and recycling will be picked up and removed by a private hauler on an as-needed basis, but that ultimately happens one to two times per week. Hours of operation for the proposed office building are 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and typically, they would expect about 20 employees on site at any given time. Hours of operation for the proposed flex warehouse building would be 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and then employees for that building could vary ultimately depending on the tenant, but we would expect no more than six flex employees on, excuse me, 16 flex employees on site at any given time. Now, just for the record, because it did come up in a couple of the review letters, section 244, 62A17 of the ordinance outlines requirements for warehouse space, which includes one, no goods are sold retail from the premises; two, all items are stored within a completely enclosed building; and three, the warehousing and storage of hazardous chemicals shall be prohibited, and the applicant will comply with all three of those requirements. Moving over to buffering, development in the LM zone requires a 100-foot buffer when abutting a residential zone. With the R3 zone located across Right-to-Beau Road, we do meet this requirement and supplement with a heavy amount of landscaping, which we will get into shortly. As you heard from Mr. Cle, the applicant is seeking waiver relief from having to provide sidewalk along the frontage, and instead is seeking to provide a contribution to the Jackson Township Pedestrian Safety Fund. We will install curbing across the full length of the frontage, but it doesn't appear there's sidewalk on this side of the road at all, actually, and that spans over two miles in length. And due to the nature of the surrounding uses and the LM zoning in place, it's not really an area where you would typically see pedestrian foot travel. From a bulk zoning criteria perspective, the proposed development is largely compliant. There's the existing nonconformity associated with lot width. As previously mentioned, we're around 172 feet wide, whereas 300 feet is required. As is mentioned in the planning review letter, there's a conservation zone overlay in the township which would apply setbacks off of environmental features such as wetlands or streams. Although there are wetlands delineated on the subject property, again, we do have our LOI from NJDEP, the property is technically not in that conservation zone overlay. Furthermore, the applicant has applied for a wetlands general permit number six from NJDEP, which will allow them to fill the wetlands because they are isolated in nature and less than one acre in size. Moving over to the proposed lighting design, we're proposing three LED pole-mounted fixtures ranging from 20 to 25 feet in height, and an additional seven total wall-mounted LED fixtures mounted at 15 feet in height. Lights will be shut off after hours, and a few of the building-mounted lights will have a motion sensor for security purposes after hours, but they will be on a timer and they will shut off after hours. There were a couple of comments in the planning and engineering review letters about adding a few fixtures to increase light levels, and the applicant's happy to work with the board professionals to, to address those concerns. Proposed landscaping, we're looking at a total of 147 trees under proposed conditions and 199 total shrubs under proposed conditions. Majority of these plantings are around the perimeter of the site and in the front yard to provide that visual buffer. We did receive the LTE review letter, and the applicant can agree to comply with all the technical comments as well as those in the planning review letter regarding landscaping. Furthermore, it was suggested that we provide additional evergreen trees in the front yard, and again, the applicant is amenable, which will avoid the need for waiver relief there. We are, however, requesting waiver relief for the disturbance within the front yard buffer area. It is heavily screened with landscaping, and we do meet that 100-foot front yard setback requirement. However, we are grading within the buffer, which technically requires waiver relief. Moving along to stormwater management, project is considered a major.
If you could identify the waiver release on the document that you're referring to.
I'm sorry?
I believe that you're looking at the CMA. If you could just identify the waiver relief being requested in the document itself.
Sure. I think that was actually in the.
The ordinance section you're looking for?
Well, no, no, not the ordinance section, just the.
Number on the.
If you're, the paragraph in the CME document, if you were.
This, sure. So, this one actually comes from the LTE letter, and that's 1 point A.
That's CME's letter, though.
Oh, yeah, sorry. To clarify, the LTE CME letter, 1 point A.
All right, you were discussing stormwater management.
Yes.
And you heard Mr. Cle's comment about new regs versus old regs?
Correct. Based on the timing of the application, it was deemed complete in June of this year. The new regulations went into effect in the middle of July, so we do feel we meet that grandfathering provision. I did have a conversation with Mr. Cle, and because we do have a pending GP number six wetlands application with the DEP, we both agreed that it would, you know, once that permit is in hand, I think any of his concerns would be alleviated. Should there be anything remaining, we're happy to comply and address those through coordination with the professionals. From a very high level, just to touch upon stormwater management, we do have two above-ground basins in the rear of the site with one pervious pavement system, one way or another through various inlets, and roof various inlets and roof conveyance systems. The stormwater runoff makes its way to those two above-ground basins in the rear, where it's designed to infiltrate into the subsurface soils. Touching upon utilities, through coordination with the Jackson MUA, it was determined there is no public water service available in the area, and a domestic well would be the best way to go. At this time, we're proposing a well on the north side of the office building in the grass area. For sewer, because the property and the entirety of the surrounding area is located outside of a state sewer service area, the applicant is proposing a septic system, which will be located in the grass between the two buildings. And we do have a resolution of approval from the Jackson Township MUA for both the septic system and the well. And final approval from the Ocean County Health Department is pending. That application has been filed. Gas and electric, just quickly, they are available from right to Bow Road, and we do intend to make underground connections to the available mains.
You have more? Go ahead. I have a couple of follow-ups for finishers.
Sure, I was just going to touch on signage real quick, Sal.
Oh, good, that was one.
So we're proposing two eighty-square-foot building-mounted signs, one on each building. The final locations and specifications will be confirmed, however, they will fully comply with the ordinance requirements, and you'll hear a bit more from that from our architect tonight. And we are also proposing one thirty-square-foot monument sign, six feet in height, and setback approximately forty-five feet from the front property line. All of those dimensions are compliant with the ordinance requirements. So that's what I have for my direct...
Just a couple of follow-ups. First, as it relates to lot building coverage and impervious coverage, just to give the board a feel for how this proposal is nowhere near the permitted requirements, can you just give the board both of those percentages, both required or allowed and proposed?
Absolutely. So the maximum building coverage allowed is forty percent. We're at twelve-point-two percent proposed. And the maximum impervious coverage allowed is seventy-five percent. We're at thirty-three-point-four percent proposed.
All right, and then you mentioned the discussions with Mr. Cle, but can we focus on his October nineteenth report? Are there any issues in there that we cannot address or need to discuss tonight?
There are not.
Okay, so as a condition of approval, the applicant would agree to address all those technical comments?
That's correct.
As it relates to Mr. Peters' report, which is October fourth, first is Mr. Peters mentions in his report, and then I mentioned again tonight, whether we are proposing to consolidate this lot with the adjacent lot, and the answer to that is no. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Other than that response, are there any other comments to Mr. Peters' report of October fourth?
No issues. We can agree to address all of them.
So we have the engineer, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Peters, I'm looking at your report, which he referred to bringing up one hundred and twenty-five parking spaces are required, eighty-two provided, and Mr. Cle, in your report, it says eighty-two required, eighty-two provided. So I just maybe, we could start from planning, what, you know, how do we calculate parking and where the number comes from?
Well, it goes through the ordinance requirement for the particular zone they're in when they describe in detail what the specifics of the use are. If you have flex warehousing, you have an office requirement and a warehouse requirement. So we've asked the applicant to put on the record specifically what's going on in each building, so we can figure out what the parking requirements are going to be.
Which we're, which we'll do.
Architect will cover it.
Mike Testa, the architect, will give you the actual square footage of each component, so we can get that.
So we'll leave out the parking requirement until we get to the architect?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Cle, I think, it's like asking a question.
Nothing, I just took, my analysis took it from the higher level than Reese did, but you know, I think he's right, that you know, it's supposed, it should be broken down for per-floor area, per use.
Perfect. Anyone from the board have any questions?
Just a few things for housekeeping, Mr. Alfieri. Outside incidental storage?
I'm sorry, what?
Outside incidental storage on this one?
None proposed, no.
No outside storage.
All right. Mrs. Campbell is not here, so I got to do it in her...
I'm going to ask about the...
Okay.
Yes.
And the EV stations, I didn't check.
He's proposing five make-ready, right?
Correct, that's correct.
All right, so the only outside question is solar. Awesome.
Okay.
And truck circulation on site, are there any trucks anticipated? Was it site-designed?
Just the box trucks.
SU-30, which is a box truck.
So no trucks larger than that will?
Yeah, correct.
We have signage, I mean, again, as an engineer, do you, is it possible for a larger vehicle to turn around safely?
Yeah, and SU-30 is a larger box truck. We also have fire truck circulation on here showing, so the fire truck can get in and out.
Correct, but what about a, you know, Class A vehicle?
Like the tractor trailer?
Like a tractor trailer?
Yeah, fifty-two footer.
So the applicant is also the owner of this property, and they would have full control over what's coming from, coming to and going from the site.
So the answer is that...
No tractor trailers.
We would not have any tractor trailers on this site.
We have no problem with signage if you want signage.
Yeah, make that a condition of approval?
That's fine.
You beat me. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, everyone was talking fast. It's going to be a condition of the approval, so it runs with the land, not the owner.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
They won't have any...
One. Yes, how many handicap parking spaces will there be?
There are currently three proposed, but we'll be updating that to four per Mr. Peters' review letter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Sal, your next witness.
Okay, Mike Testa.
Thank you.
And he has his exhibits on the board, so we're going to set them up right here. I was away last week, I forgot to remind them before I left to send them over to the town, so it's my fault that we don't have them on the screen.
You got a good tan out of it.
We were stranded with the hurricane, so we, three days of no utilities, no cafeteria food, it was, it was interesting.
Get alcohol.
Sorry?
Get alcohol.
No, there was plenty of alcohol.
That's all that matters.
Antigua.
Not a bad place to get stranded, though.
All right, Mr. Testa, please raise your right hand.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony, information, questions, or comments you present? Be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please say your name, spell your last, and your credentials, please.
Sure, my name is Michael, last name is Testa, T-E-S-T-A. I'm a licensed architect of the state of New Jersey since nineteen ninety-six and good standing. Graduate of New Jersey Institute Technology, Bachelor of Architecture, nineteen ninety-one. Principal of architectural firm, Michael V. Testa, architect, Manalpa, New Jersey, since two thousand and two, and I've had the pleasure of testing, testifying in front of this board before.
Thank you, we accept your credentials.
All right, so Mike, we're going to need to mark, we're just primarily the color renderings, if you would, so. The first one would be A3, and can you identify that for the board?
A3 is a three-dimensional color rendering of the office building at the front of the Thank you, everyone. I have the renderings up just to give you initial appearance of the building, but I'd like to start with the floor plans, your exhibits that you have with you, PB1 of the office building. As Mr. McDermott indicated, the office building is a eighteen thousand square foot gross-floor area building. The first floor would be a subterranean basement area. The basement area would include spaces such as a break area for the staff, additional bathrooms, a training room with an emergency egress door out to the grade level, and then storage area for the office space. So approximately fifty percent of the area down below will be used as office space, the other fifty percent would be storage for the office use, along with utilities. The main floor plan, which would be the ground-level entrance, as you can see at the bottom of the plan, would be, if you look at the rendering on the wall, on Mr. McDermott's, the west side, which would be the right side of the parking lot, would be the bottom of my plan. So the orientation is very, it's different, actually, he has entrance there, but anyway...
So just so the record is clear, these are all A3, or are we...
No, these architectures were submitted in support of the application. These are just floor plans that were submitted.
We're not...
Correct, Mr. Testa. Correct. It's part of the application. The sheet I'm referencing now is Sheet PB2 of the office building, and this depicts the approximate layout of the first floor. We have a main entrance area with a double door access into a lobby reception area. We have an elevator that'll take you to all three levels. The building will be completely, fully ADA compliant, accessible through all three floors. And with that, we have a depiction of the approximate use of down-to-earth landscaping and what their needs are on that first floor level. And then we go up to the upper level, which would be the second floor, and as you can see, it's almost like a house where you have a habitable attic space. This isn't a squared-off box building. The rendering, you can see the building is designed to be a house structure. The elevator does come up to this floor, we have an egress stair, a private bath for the executives, and it's an executive conference room, lobby area for some support staff, and two executive offices off to the right-hand side. Either side is kind of like a Cape Cod house, where you have storage area, the sloping areas of the roof, so the majority of the floor plan, or a third more or less, will be primarily office, where the rest of the space would just be some dead storage space and attic space for the building. The elevations, I'm going to refer back to the rendering. Elevation, again, is indicated, it was designed to appear as a residential-type structure, and the use of residential materials, we have a cultured stone base, a horizontal-sided siding at the lower level. And the upper level, we have a boxed-out bay-window type concept facing the roadway with some architectural tongue groove or T-111 battening board type accents up in the area. We have corbeling accenting the roof lines, heavy detailing around the windows to accentuate those windows, and the building will be completely energy compliant. The HVAC systems will be self-contained in the lower level with condensers on the ground around the perimeter building that would not interfere with the emergency access around the building. Next rendering will be the flex building.
And that would be A4.
The A4 built, the A4 exhibit is a two-dimensional rendering of the flex warehouse building. It's a much simpler building, as you can see, it's the longer building with the orange roof in the center of the property. The building is eighteen thousand square feet, as Mr. McDermott indicated, there is broken down into six potential tenant spaces. With that, I'm going to refer back up to the first floor plan of this building, which would be PB1 for the flex warehouse building. This floor plan depicts approximate layouts for each of the six tenant spaces. I think the question was asked earlier, the office area versus the warehouse space or the flex space. As you can see in the lower corner, each space has a six-hundred-square-foot office component in there, and that six-hundred square feet includes a small, two small bathrooms and the warehouse, the warehouse space would be twenty-four hundred square feet. And they're broken up evenly across the building with mandors into the office space, a mandor into the flex warehouse, along with an overhead door, and a rear egress door for emergency purposes out the back. The building will have, I'm going to go back over signage on the other building for everyone. The building will have a signage, as Mr. McDermott indicated, of eighty square feet. This will be on the north facing, it's the short side wall facing the small office building, as you can see here. This should be listed as an Exhibit 2, Sal, because the original one did not have the signage, and I just wanted to clarify.
So A5, and could you describe that?
A5 is a two-dimensional drawing of the building elevations that depict the size and location of the wall-mounted signage. The wall-mounted signage will be located up in the top right-hand corner, closest to the drive aisle for ease of, for appearance purposes. The sign will not be eternally illuminated, it will not be illuminated. We have two gooseneck light fixtures above the sign, that'll be washing down on the sign to illuminate the sign. So that'll be a surface-mounted sign located in the top area. I have it indicated at about approximately twenty-six feet above grade, so it can be seen down the drive aisle as they're coming to see the tenants, and it's large enough that it could be broken up with each of the individual tenants' names on them. And the signage location for the office building will be located to the left side of the main entrance door. There is a four-by-six wall-mounted sign there, it's not illuminated, it's just the same as the other one, so it'll be a wall-mounted decorative sign, and we will use the soffit area, we'll have directional soffit lights that'll wash down on the wall and illuminate the sign, so there's no additional lights added to the building to illuminate that area. It'll be a wall-mounted sign. Based upon the areas, the size, both wall areas exceed the eighty square feet allowable, the fifteen percent, I think the office building comes over to two-hundred-and-nine square feet, maximum allowable is eighty, we're proposing twenty-four square feet. Same thing with the two-dimensional drawing for the flex warehouse, that area would exceed the, the fifteen percent, well exceeds the eighty square feet allowable, we're proposing eighty square feet max to meet the maximum allowable for that wall area. And that concludes my test.
And one final question, a board member who's not here this evening always asks if solar panels are proposed and/or can they be, or will the buildings be constructed so that they can accommodate solar panels?
So, right now that we have the building drawing with sloping, standing-seam metal roof, I'm sure that we could probably find areas for solar panels on the building.
Well, no, just, will it be constructed so they can accommodate them?
Yes, it would be constructed.
Would that apply to both buildings?
For both buildings, it could be, yes.
That's all the architecture testimony?
Thank you. So now, I guess, let's go back to the parking, and let's see where the two calculations are naturally not matching up.
So now we have this, I hate to do it sequentially like this, but now that we have the percentages, our traffic engineer is going to go item by item and give you how...
A lot of it has to do with the use of each, meaning over here...
Correct, correct.
Okay, so meaning, let's start with the twelve-thousand-square-foot office building. So...
Yeah, Mr. Cle, on page four, I think it's...
Mr. Cle broke it down as twelve thousand for office, six thousand for storage, which I'm assuming is the basement. What is this basement designed to be used for?
The basement is designed to be used for both storage and for some office use. We have a break room down there as well as training. The second floor also is almost a fifty-fifty wash with office and storage area, because again, it's not a squared-off roof.
Basically, the basement is not storage, it's office. So we have eighteen thousand square feet of office, so it looks like Mr. Peters' report, eighteen thousand ninety spaces, you know, seems to be, you know, if there's office down, up, that seems to be a standard office building. Now, let's go over to the warehouse, the flex space. So we have, you know, in each flex space, we said there's twenty-five hundred square feet and then a six-hundred-square-foot office, correct?
Yeah, each, each total area of the flex warehouse unit is three thousand square feet. Of the three thousand square feet, six hundred square feet is office space and twenty-four hundred square feet is warehouse space.
Understood. So typically, I believe this board has counted the office separate in flex space, so...
Well, let's say it's a proponent of the flex space, it makes it a flex space, so it's like, it's saving electrician, they have a small office component where they have somebody answering the phones, the owner of the facility would have a small office with a desk, they'd have their files, so they're running their business as well as storing their materials. That's typically how I've done flex buildings for over the last ten years.
Right, and our traffic engineer is going to go item by item to give you the calculation of spaces that we feel are required for each component? I believe your ordinance doesn't break it down that way, but that's how practically we think it needs to be interpreted.
I know, just, I mean, right now we really have described like a secretary, I guess, some sort of support staff, owner, and then the electricians that are doing the electrical work. The way, the way that it's broken down here is we have one for fifteen hundred, so it would make, would only require two spaces for three employees?
Well, the majority of the flex space employees don't really operate out of it. They'll come there, they'll get the materials, and they will leave, like, you know, like said, like an electrician, even the proprietor. He'll come there, load his truck in the morning, get whatever messages, go out, come back at the end of the day, unload his truck, set up for the next day, and then the office, if they have phone calls, billing, they'll do that amongst themselves. It's geared for a small business, it's not a larger business, so what my experience with flex warehouses.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I guess to Mr. Testa and Mr. Alfieri, here's our concern. That's great, that's what's on a plan, someone's going to go market it. Practically, you're building six-hundred-square-foot of office, you're building eighteen thousand square-foot building that could be all office. So I think your responsibility is to tell us what's being used, what safeguards are in place, and what happens if you need more parking? It looks like an office. I don't know how that's...
This is the office, or...
That is the office, yeah. Well, the flex space, we, there's no issue, they cannot exceed a total of thirty, thirty-six hundred, yeah, thirty-six hundred square feet of the flex space cannot, no more than that could be office space. Right, six times six.
The total building, okay.
Of the entire building. So that can be certainly imposed as a condition of approval, so that you're safeguarded on the amount of office space in the flex space building.
But there's nothing that stops the applicant from building an eighteen thousand square-foot building, twelve thousand square foot on the first two floors, and six thousand square foot in the basement, and selling it as office space.
Right.
I think you need to provide the board with some comfort that you can provide the parking for an eighteen thousand square-foot building. That's all.
Understood. Yeah, so, go ahead.
Well, I was going to ask, do we have a statement of operations guy that's going to be testifying?
Yes, well, Mr. McDermott summarized it, but it is, it was submitted and it's attached to Mr. Cle's report as well. Let me just get to it. Yeah, there's a one-page statement of operation, but it doesn't get into the, it just talks about the maximum number of employees per shift for the office building, forget about the Flex space building, of 20 employees. But I understand Mr. Peters' concern that if the whole building is office space, then it, then the parking numbers change, and our traffic engineer will talk about that, and then we may have to come back to that when he's finished. But as far as the Flex space is concerned, I think we've locked that in, that it can't be more intense than what was testified to, which is 600 square foot office per unit max.
And again, only one, we're only accounting one vehicle for, you know, for Flex space, so if an electrician comes in with two trucks, or, you know, father-son business, and then, you know, that's obviously not going to be allowed because they don't have enough parking for that. They would have to come back before the board to get another, you know, additional relief. I mean, this is a risk, that when, you know, if we were to give you this relief and you have an electrician that wants to come in with two vehicles, they would not be allowed to operate, they would have to come back before the board. Am I correct, Mr. Peters?
Let's, let's let our traffic person expert testify before, just to dig a little deeper into what you're saying, if you don't mind.
Of course.
He's not qualified to talk about parking, he's just giving you square footage, that's not the architect's function.
I'm sorry, spare a moment. Yes, the owners have directed a training area in the lower, this is for the employees or the staff, above the review on OSHA requirements and things to that effect, that they would have a space down there like a meeting room for their staff to go over stuff, for their staff, that's not outside, agencies coming in renting the room and doing that.
For the questions? Okay, your next witness?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you present will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name, spell your last, and your credentials, please.
Justin Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-R. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey as well as several other states. I'm also a certified professional traffic operations engineer by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, practicing traffic planning for close to 25 years now, and testified in front of this board in recent past.
Except for your credentials, thank you.
Thank you very much. I had a whole presentation to talk about access and circulation and traffic, but I can hear what the one concern we're really having is parking. I will tell you shortly, from a trip generation perspective, we're well below what would be considered a significant increase in traffic, we're talking between 50 and 60 peak hour trips, even I think that's on the high end of what we're looking at. So I don't think with the good access we have on Wright-DeBau and 537, or to the west and Commodore to the east, you're not really going to notice the traffic that's associated with this project, it's not going to have any detrimental impact. But I hear the real concern the board has is talking about parking. Now, I will tell you how we came up with the 82 spaces. When we looked at it, we looked at the Flex Warehouse Building as a warehouse type of use, not occupied by office space. There is ancillary office that goes along with any type of business, you need somebody that's there for the warehouse or there to do their books. But we took that all, that whole 18,000 square feet, and we said, okay, your ordinance says one per 1,500. Right, so we divided that whole number by 1,500, it comes out to 12 parking spaces. We then allocated, not knowing the tenants, we allocated one additional space for an employee vehicle. So the 18,000 square foot Flex Warehouse Building, we calculated as a requirement of 18 parking spaces. In the office building, again, knowing exactly who the tenant is, I understand there's some concern, and the board needs to protect themselves should the property be sold, but from our perspective, when we ran the numbers, we calculated 12,000 square foot of office at one per 200, right, that comes out to 60, plus the four spaces for the 6,000 square feet of warehouse or storage in the basement. All that combined comes out to a requirement of 82 parking spaces. But I do hear the concern of the board, what happens if we put more office into the Flex space? First of all, we need to remember that we only designate six spaces along the, it's upside down, so the western side of the building, there's also roll-up doors there, because we do anticipate these being contractors. But if we were to go to more of an office space and they don't need that roll-up door, then there's room in front of that roll-up door to park another vehicle, or even a third vehicle associated with each one of the uses. So as I'm frantically scribbling back there and hearing the questions, I've got a 300-foot face of that building. There's six mandors along there at about six foot wide, so you're subtracting about 72 feet off of that. You then do nine-foot spaces, you can get 25 parking spaces along that western face of the entire building. We also have 71 parking spaces along the western side of the office building and in the parking lot between the two. So in practicality, if the whole thing went office and we striped it that way along the commercial building, you're looking at about 96 spaces. Okay? So then we look, and this was the testimony I was originally going to do, when you look to current trends, we look to the Institute of Transportation Engineers publication, parking generation, about every two or three years, they take data that's been collected on all types of different land uses, and they compile and they publish it, just so we in the transportation industry know what's going on in current trends of how people are parking, different work environments, you know, the Flex work schedules, that type of thing. If you look to what the current edition says, we're talking about 2.39 spaces per thousand square feet for office. If you applied that to the full 18,000 square feet of the entire facility, you're talking about a parking demand of 82 spaces. So I think that even if this entire facility went to office and they restriped or provided that additional space for the individual tenants along the Flex Building, I think the board can feel comfortable that really is, there will be enough parking for the entire project. And that's not what's anticipated, that's not what they're contemplating, the current applicant and owner of the property is contemplating. They want to use the office building as their corporate office, they want to bring some Flex small contractors in to use the building in the back. But I think if it went completely office, you can feel comfortable that there will be enough parking out there, that they're not going to overflow onto the street, they're not going to be searching for places, they're not parking on the side of Wright-DeBau. So I think there will be sufficient parking to accommodate any concern.
And while Mr. Taylor was speaking, I did speak to my clients, and they clarified, they have no issue if the basement level of the office building be used only for storage with that one training room, no office space in the basement. So, Justin, that, does that obviously lessen the parking demand that would be required if you did that pure calculation?
It does, I don't have that number.
His parking calculation was based on the fact that the basement is fully storage, has zero...
Except when he used the IT number, he said 18,000.
Yeah, so the 82 spaces, when we did it originally, does contemplate that being storage. But the number that I gave you, that 82, if you were to take all 18,000 square feet as office, based on current industry data from IT, right, it says 18,000 square feet at 2.39 per thousand comes out to 82 spaces in demand, and we would have 96 if the entire building went office and it was striped as such.
But again, we would agree if the board would grant approval to limit the basement of the office building to mechanical, storage mechanical and that one training room.
How much space storage do they anticipate needing?
I can hear...
How much storage space do you anticipate needing in, you know, 12,000 square feet plus storage, it's not a, I don't see, I don't foresee a large, a need for a large amount of storage space? I mean, is there...
Oh, I don't know.
I mean, it's your office buildings, I hope so.
We could bring the applicant up to answer that question if you, if you want.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you present will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name, spell your last, and your affiliation to the applicant.
William Merkler, M-E-R-K-L-E-R, and I'm the president of Down to Earth Landscaping Incorporated. You would not believe how much storage you need. We have boxes on top boxes, we've made, taken warehouse space and collected, the requirement just in the last year for employees, we were, are told that we would need 15 percent more store space just to keep on going. So that's why we built the basement and our training. Training is extremely important to our company, has been since we started, and we needed a really great training room, year-round, that we can train our personnel, and that's why the basement is so important to us. And the storage just increasing with the amount of documents we're required to retain every year.
Now, the people that are going to be training in the office, in the training room, are they typically people that would work in the office, or these are people that would be on the road?
No, it'll, it'll be our designers, they'll be taking courses, we have a landscape design team and, that will work in there, get trained on the newest techniques, it'll be mostly the office staff getting trained, then they bring it out to the field. So, you know, it's really, the guys are, our staff is digesting it down there and then bringing it out to the field.
What I'm asking is, is there overlap, meaning can you tell me that the same people that would have a desk upstairs, the same people that would have a desk upstairs would come downstairs for training? Or are these people that would typically not have a desk?
No, it's, it's our area managers, supervisors who will have desks, you know, in this office, you know, and virtually, you know, train other parts of our company that are in other states.
I'm just trying to help you justify the ordinance, justify the waiver by telling me that the same people that will be upstairs are going to come downstairs, so you're not generating additional people coming onto the site.
If you look at the layout of some of the office spaces, you know, it's for a designer who is by himself, likes to be closed off, if we, if you pack in three or four or five designers in a room in their small offices, it just doesn't work, we see it now all the time.
But the chairman's focused on this training room, that the concern is you're bringing additional staff on-site, which will require additional parking.
No, no, the staff will be from the office going down into the meeting room, sorry to clarify that.
So, I'm just trying to help understand the justification for the design waiver by you telling me that you're not going to, it's not going to be, bring additional people to the site, it helps justify to say that you may need some less parking. Meaning if you were to have a very large, you know, if you were to have a large cafeteria for your employees, you could try to justify that, to say maybe you shouldn't have to provide extra parking because it's the employees that are going to go for lunch.
Well, that, that's what we have it designed as, as a break room and a, you know, basically a classroom. They'll be teaching Zoom classes down there and broadcasting them out to our other locations. So, you know, it's tough to do that in your small office space and, and, you know, work with the guys that are, that are working together.
So what you're stating, Mr. Merkler, is it's non-simultaneous use, either you're working upstairs in the office, or you're downstairs being trained, you can't occupy both seats at the same time.
Both spots, exactly.
Okay, yes. So that's your statement, right?
Sorry, sorry if I dragged that out too long.
That's okay, just, I think that's what we needed to hear.
Mr. Peters, any input here?
I believe the applicant provided you testimony about his use of the building. I remind the board simply that it's an office building. Architect stood up and said it's being designed as an office building. When it gets sold, it's an 18,000 square foot office building. So, Mr. Alfieri's client says, well, 6,000 of it won't be in office, because otherwise, I mean, I don't mean to put Mr. Taylor on the spot, where are we going to park people? So, the standard he referred to from IT is an average, quite frankly, it's not an average from Jackson Township. Someone comes in with a tech company and uses all 18,000 square feet, there's not enough parking.
Well, we agree, we're not going to use all 18,000 square feet, and if the board grants the approval, we have no issue filing a deed restriction that limits the use of the basement, so any subsequent owner would know the prohibition.
Then I think the board's been given the best-case scenario in support of the waiver of the parking requirement.
So, yeah, so based upon the two, the two components, the Flex space, we have limited to 600 square feet per unit for office space, so you know that intensity, and then the office space, we've agreed to deed restrict the basement, so it's consistent with the testimony of Mr. Merkler and Mr. Taylor.
Now, maybe I'll just ask, just come back up a second, is the basement really the best place to store paperwork in a kind of a wet area? You know, the area better than I do.
Yeah, you know, we're going to make sure it's high and dry, yes, absolutely. I mean, we did soil tests, soil borings on the property, you know, the foundation is well above the water table, we're going to do a poured concrete foundation, have, drain it outside. Luckily, I know the soil's there, it drains extremely well, the property, so I'm confident in keeping the paperwork that we're required to in the basement.
Is it also maybe a question for the attorney, is it possible to restrict the basement from getting built out, you know, from getting finished, aside for that thousand square feet or whatever, whatever that number was for that, you know, training room?
I mean, you'd be going back to codes and everything, you'd be going back to building codes and everything like that, so if we want to restrict it just to document storage, maybe that's what we can do.
Are you okay with that?
So, the intent on the basement is concrete floor with sheet rock, no, no other improvements?
Is there a way to solidify that in a resolution?
We could include that in the deed restriction.
Right, just for document storage and that's it.
Right, and concrete floor with sheet rock walls.
Walls, you know. Yeah.
Document office storage.
Document office storage.
Chairman Sullivan, sure.
Question, is there any way we can guarantee that on the second floor, the area is marked office storage would always remain storage, is there any way of making that permanent?
Mike?
Did you find it, Bill? Okay.
So, the area on the second floor, this 18,000 square feet is misleading, because 18,000 square feet is the footprint, and if you could see, if anyone's lived in a Cape Cod or a smaller home, the second floor, it's a triangle, okay? So this area, see this roof area here?
Yeah.
You can't stand up in here, it's an inhabitable area. So that's why it's like in, it's, I don't know, like in the older homes, you put your Christmas trees, or you put your holiday decorations, or you put your storage items up in those spaces, a lot of times people put air conditioning units in these spaces, it's really an unoccupied, we're not taking the 6,000 square feet all the way out to the building edge, like the floor below. The floor below is full, 6,000 square feet of office.
So basically, you're saying that even if you wanted to, there really would be no way to turn that into an office space, because the height and the angle of the roof would make it impossible?
Correct, and I want to refer you back to sheet PB3. So if you could look at PB3 and you can just imagine this triangle coming up like this, this center area down the middle is the highest space on this floor, that's where we're going to, you know, inhabit this space. We have a conference, an executive conference room, almost like a hallway with support staff, and then two executive offices. These outer edges are those areas where those sloping roofs are coming down, it's going from a zero ceiling height up to an eight-foot ceiling height. So somewhere in between, the average mean height might be four and a half feet in the middle. So it's not a space, there's no windows in those spaces, it's really an unoccupiable space.
Thank you for clarifying.
Just a question for the architect, if that is uninhabitable space, why is this calculated in your gross square footage?
Honestly, it's a good question, I mean, that's really, it's making it look bad for our application in the sense that, yes, it's the footprint of the second floor, but it's really...
Rather you strip it out, that way you can come in, change your design of your building and come back with 18,000 square feet with a regular roof.
Well, that would be a different building type and everything, if we were to change the roof style into a, because that's an actual, we can, I don't know, I would make that a contingent...
What do you call that design of roof that we're...
It's a gable roof.
Gable roof, so that's, that's what's being built, it's not going to be a mansard squared off roof.
No, no, I understand, I just, again, we want to make sure that they're not going to come back and make a, because this is not really an 18,000 square foot building, this is really, you know, probably somewhere in the 14, 14 and a half thousand, I'm assuming.
Because looking at this floor plan, it's this 6,000 square foot rectangle here, of that 6,000 square feet, I would say approximately a third to a half of that floor area is occupiable.
And if somebody were to buy this building at a later date and want to turn that into a full floor, how hard would that be?
Well, they'd have to go in front of the board for an approval to increase the, you know, the floor... the floor area of that space, of that second floor. Again, like your home, if you wanted to make that a habitable space in your home, they call it raise the roof, okay?
They're already approved for 18,000 square feet. Meaning, I don't wanna approve them for 18,000 square feet if part of your approval is not 18,000 square feet.
All right, gentlemen, may I suggest, from being a construction manager, Mr. Tessa, maybe it's in your best effort if you classify that space as mechanical. This way, if you're storing filters or whatever, or there's incidental storage, it's not habitable space, it's mechanical space. Because just quickly looking at the design of your building, you're either gonna, you know, do your mechanicals from underneath or above, and I think it's a little bit of both. So my advice to you to get out of that trap of what is occupied usable space would be to go back and just, for the record, relabel it as mechanical space. We all know that no one's gonna live in a mechanical space or function in a mechanical space. And to the best of my interpretation, understanding, the interpretation, it would not be construed as square-footage floor space for occupation. That would get you out of the hole, that would solve part of your problem, and we can work on wrapping this thing up.
That's the intent, so that's fine.
Can you, can you give us a number of, you know, can you break that down?
Mike, can you, while John Tykeen is up, the planner to testify, can you give us a square footage of the usable space on that?
Exactly, so that way when we write a resolution.
I'll calculate that out.
And then we can max that, that would be the max.
That way, if the board writes a resolution and, you know, it's an approval, we could break it down.
Do you need that to calculate? Oh, you have it, okay.
I'll take this anyway, because I got a scale.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last quick witness.
Now you barely have any variance to justify anymore.
I know, but, you know, he's here, he's dressed up.
I know, I know.
Yes, we.
Oh, come on! We need to be sworn in, John? I do.
Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you present will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please say your name, spell your last, and your credentials, please.
Certainly. My name is John Tykeena, T as in Thomas, A I, K as in Kelly, I N A. I am the president and principal of all things planning and development in South Brunswick, New Jersey. I have been for the last two years. I've been a planner in New Jersey, licensed planner, since my graduation from Rutgers University in 1992. I've had the pleasure of keeping my license for the last 31 years. It remains in good standing. I've testified before more than 125 planning and zoning boards around the state of New Jersey. I've never been to your planning board. I have been to your zoning board, though.
Welcome to our planning board.
Thank you so much. It's happy to be here.
So John, just to put this in perspective, in terms of relief, we have, we're permitted use in the zone, correct?
Correct.
And there are three conditional use standards that we've agreed to meet. So the jurisdiction of the board is planning board, not zoning board.
Correct.
And there's various C variances, relief and waivers, that I'm gonna ask you to briefly describe and justify.
Correct.
Go.
So we, we need certain C variance relief, which would be our lot width of approximately 172 feet, where 300 feet is required. We have some setback variances to the wetland areas, which are proposed to be filled under the GP6. We believe both of these are C1 variances. They're unique property conditions that specifically relate to this particular property. And a C1 variance is a variance that's granted by reason of exceptional narrowness or the shape of the property. So again, we have a very long, narrow property, as was, as was shown on the exhibit. And this presents somewhat of a hardship to us in terms of meeting our lot width, our lot width in question. Here, we also have wetlands that are, that are to be filled. And finally, on our long, narrow lot, providing for parking is somewhat constrained. So we believe, and I'll talk about parking a little bit differently, because I think we'll probably finish that up as a C2 variance. With all of our variances, we need to show that we do advance some of the purposes of, well, first thing we need to show is it relates specific piece of property. So first of all, any of our variances specifically relate to this property and no other. And they're not creating any precedent anywhere else in the town, et cetera. It solely relates to 705 Wright-Debault Road and no other. We also do advance some of the purposes of zoning. I'll submit that there are two. Purpose G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses in accordance with their respective environmental requirements to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. And I, to provide a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. In this instance, we are providing for permitted use. It's a unique location with the down-to-earth farm being next door. To have the down-to-earth corporate offices being right next door is appropriate. You know, we didn't do the, really, the good down-to-earth story. You know, they've been here in Jackson Township for more than 20 years, employ many, 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 many people. Really a nice business that's been here for 20 years. You know, so we're talking about people that have been in town and members of this community for a very long time. And they're here, here to stay. They're not going anywhere. So again, I think it's really just in continuing their investment in the community, which is a, which is a great thing. But this specific property is next door. So I think that that's a, you know, obviously a very good thing. So, and then you heard through the landscaping plan and the architecture, it's certainly gonna be a desirable site, an attractive site. It'll be a very attractive even for a, what is essentially a quasi, you know, warehouse office use. We also need to satisfy, in terms of the parking, we think the parking is appropriate. Mr. Taylor provided discussion about how we kinda meet the sweet middle of 82 spaces. I think that the, while I'm not gonna disagree with Mr. Peters, I think that that is a, you know, separating the uses is a, is a very conservative way of looking at parking. And I know the parking is a, is a concern in Jackson often. But on this specific site, we have a few things. One, we do have enough pavement. As Mr. Taylor testified, if we had to add more parking, we certainly can. But we think that the 82 that's provided is appropriate. We think it's appropriate for down-to-earth in that they know their business. And if it has to change, or, and I know we're gonna get some new math with the restriction in the, in the offices, you know, in the office use on the second floor. But again, I think that the parking is appropriate. And that, I think, is a C2 variance, where the benefit of granting the variance outweighs any possible detriment. And again, here, I think that's certainly the case. We'd rather provide for the right amount of parking. As we testified, we're significantly on a pervious coverage and all those things. We could add more. We just don't think it's necessary. And by not being necessary, we think it's a better plan by providing for the appropriate 82 as opposed to the higher number. And then finally, in terms of the negative criteria, no variance should be granted. It will present a substantial detriment to the public good. Here, we have permitted uses. As Mr. Taylor said, there's virtually no traffic impact. And it's a well-designed landscape and attractive site that's gonna fit in and certainly not have any negative impact on our residential neighborhoods across the street. And then finally, no variance is granted. That'll impair the intent purpose of the zone plan. The zoning ordinance here, we're implementing your zone plan or zoning ordinance. It's permitted LM use. We're meeting all of the bulk centers that we can, except for the, except for the lot width, et cetera, that are related specifically to the site. And we're providing for parking that we believe is appropriate. So for these reasons, I believe you can grant the requested relief. And I'm available for your questions.
And, and the architect has calculated that no more than 2,000 square feet of that top floor will be office space. The rest will be mechanical. So essentially, one-third would be usable for office space. And we would agree to deed restrict that as well, so that no subsequent buyer can change it without getting relief from this board or the township. Which really means that there's 8,000 square feet of office space in that 16,000-square-foot building that we started with, plus the training room. And that concludes the planning testimony, John.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Just, just one more time, just for the record. So state the last condition of approval that you wanted to.
That the, that the third, the top floor, I don't, because the basement, I don't know if you consider that a floor. But the top floor would be no more than 2,000 square feet of office space. The balance would be mechanical space, as Mr. Riker described earlier. So 2,000 square feet office. And we also agreed to the gable roof. That's, it certainly would be a condition of approval to further assure that no one could secretly convert that space.
Any questions?
I just got, I just got one more for the statement of operations for the president. So the other parties, are they gonna be there? Are they subcontractors? Are they independent contractors? Do you have any control over?
When you say there, you're talking about?
Just the other contractors that are gonna be?
The flex space?
Right.
Other tenants? There's?
Yeah, it'll be tenants, not?
So is nobody affiliated with your, with down-to-earth?
No.
Correct.
We're gonna keep that separate.
And keep that?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
All right.
That concludes our presentation, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cle. Mr. Peters, anything to add? Thank you. Would you like to conclude? Or you're done?
Public.
At this time, at this point, we'd like to open it up to the public. If anyone has any questions, please come forward.
Seeing no one come forward, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Would you like to conclude?
Very quickly, thank you. We, we worked through the parking in a way that we should've done before we got here. But I think we're, if you did the numbers now, we're probably overparked. But it's better that we're overparked than underparked. We'd request that the board grant the approval subject to all the conditions that we stipulated to, including compliance with the board professional reports.
Thank you. Anyone like to deliberate, make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Rosie?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, and it's good to see a local business come forward with such a well-thought-out plan. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes, and thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, John.
Your, thank you. Your reputation in the community precedes you. You know, we always see, you know, see your trucks around and, thank you.
And really, we owe a lot to Jackson Township. 23 years we've been here, and we couldn't be happier. We've grown our business, and we have a great community, and we appreciate all your work.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Congratulations. We'll just take five minutes while they get set up. Looks like a lot of movement. Thank you.
Thank you.